YouTube. And again, per the agenda, written comment was accepted via email up until noon today to allow council members to review prior to the meeting. If the public would like to make any public comment afternoon on the meeting date, they will need to do so by calling into the meeting. Again, the phone number, eight zero five, eight six five, seven two, seven six. There were no written comments received for today's meeting. We will be accepting public comment via telephone tonight. Again, the phone number, eight zero five, eight six five, seven two, seven six. And we will be repeating that number throughout the evening. So if you haven't had a chance to write it down already, you will have in the very near future. With that, I would like to call this meeting of the Paso Robles City Council for Tuesday, May the 5th, 2020 to order. I want to, I would like to invite the council and everyone listening in to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Council, if you would mute your phones so we don't have a cacophony of pledges, that would be helpful. So here we go. If you would join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I understand tonight we have a guiding thought to begin the meeting by Mr. Dan Feldman. Is Mr. Feldman with us?
No, Mayor Martin, he is not.
Very good. Then we will proceed on with this evening's agenda, and I will ask for a roll call of council members, please.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
And I'm present. Thank you very much. At this time, we have a moment set aside for introduction of staff and commissioner members present. If we could have those who are present identify themselves so that people know that they're online and participating in the meeting, please.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director.
Julie Dolan, Community Services Director, joined by Frida Berman, Maintenance Superintendent, Linda Plasha, Recreation Services Manager, and Heather Stevenson, Recreation Coordinator.
Ty Lewis, Police Chief.
Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief.
Brian Cornell, Administrative Services.
Sarah Johnson Rios, Assistant City Manager, joined by Dave McHugh, IT Manager, Melissa Martin, Deputy City Clerk, Shawna Hollenstein, Community Engagement Coordinator.
Kimberly Hood, interim City Attorney.
I'm Fruchy, City Manager.
Very good. Thank you all for being here and thank you for the work you're doing. We'll move on with our agenda now. Prior to this meeting, we had an announced closed session meeting of the Paso Robles City Council. I will ask the city attorney to report any reportable action from that meeting.
The council convened in closed session for conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding the unrepresented groups and employee organizations identified on the agenda. There is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Item number one on tonight's agenda under presentation is an update on COVID-19 in the city of Paso Robles. Sarah Johnson Rios, Assistant City Manager, and Mr. Stornetta, the Emergency Services Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, members of the council, Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief. Tonight's presentation will be a three-part update. We'll be presenting the current situation, response updates, and discuss current recovery efforts. We will pause briefly between each presentation to answer any questions. So our current situation, California now has over 56,000 confirmed cases of COVID-19, resulting in over 2,300 deaths. The number of COVID-19-related deaths increased by almost 3% since Sunday. The number of diagnostic tests for COVID-19 in California continues to increase, reaching a total of 780,000. California's hospitalizations due to COVID-19 increased by 85 from Sunday. In total, 49% of the positive cases in California are between the ages of 18 and 49. In San Luis Obispo County, our numbers continue to rise. Since our last council meeting, an additional 70 people have been infected with the disease. The latest data indicates that 95% of us still have not been infected. With this information, we must continue to take steps to reduce our exposure. I urge all residents to continue wearing cloth face coverings when you go out in public, continue social distancing, and disinfect often. As we look at the region slide on your, before you, you can see the North County continues to have the largest number of positive cases. The 68 cases identified for Paso Robles represents all of the 93446 area. As of today, there are 18 active cases within the city limits of Paso Robles. These cases are distributed throughout the city in nine different locations. Fire departments throughout the county continue to see a rise in emergency responses related to COVID-19. In Paso Robles alone, 11% of our emergency responses are for calls that meet COVID-19 Optum, in conjunction with CalOES, has set up over 80 testing centers throughout California to expand COVID-19 testing capacity. Paso Robles was selected as one of these testing sites. The Paso Robles Testing Center is located at the Veterans Center located out at 240 Scott Street. The online registration link can be found on readyslow.org, or you can register by phone Monday through Friday at 1-888-634-1123. Insurance information will be collected when you register, but no copay is required. If you do not have insurance, the state of California will pay for your test. The center has the capacity to test 132 individuals a day. That's one person every five minutes. Yesterday, they completed 124 tests. Turnaround time for the test results is 48 to 72 hours. No walk-in registrations are allowed, and you must have a driver's license or ID card to be tested. The county is aware of the difficulty the public is having with the registration process and is working with Optum to address the issue. Anyone that is symptomatic, vulnerable, or essential can get tested. This includes anyone with COVID-19 symptoms, health care workers and first responders, all persons aged 65 and older, or any age with chronic medical conditions, residents or employees of congregate care living facilities, and persons in essential occupations, which include utilities, grocery, food supply, and public employees. Individuals must be a California resident to register. That includes the situational update. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are.
Thank you, Chief. This is a presentation item and no action is required tonight. We will go to the council for questions on this section of the report, starting with Councilwoman Garcia. I don't hear from Councilwoman Garcia. Is she online? She'll come back to her. Councilman Gregory.
Yeah, I have a question for Chief Stornetta.
Go ahead.
So Chief, when did they start testing at the Veterans Center?
They test, started testing on Monday.
This Monday?
Yes, yesterday.
So on their first day, they did 125 tests?
Correct. With the capacity to do 132, so great start to their first day.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond.
Yeah, Chief, is the timing to get results back still a few days, or what's the timing?
So timing with Optum is 48 to 72 hours, which is actually better than we've seen with other private labs, which are five to seven days.
And that testing can also discern if they've had it already?
It just, as far as I'm aware, it just says if they currently have it. I'm unaware if it, the test actually shows if they've already gone through the symptoms, if they actually did have it.
Right. I was looking to see if they've got the antibodies and they're, you know, they've gone through it already and became well. That was what I was wondering, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong.
No, no further questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Garcia, are you with us? And do you have a comment?
I'm here. Do you hear me?
I do.
Okay, no question.
Thank you. I see from my notes here that we have someone online with a public comment on this report. We have two people online. We'll go to the phone line now. If you'd please turn that on for Mr. Dale Guston. Dale, are you with us?
Hi, Dale Guston, 9:45, Spring Street. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. The, the concern I have is that, you know, prior to this virus hitting, our, our downtown businesses were, a lot of them were hurting because of the parking situation. Now, San Luis Obispo has taken the brunt of the, their problem and declared free parking in the entire city. No, no paid parking in San Luis Obispo. I, I hope that Paso Robles would do the same.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Jen Albin. Jen, are you with us?
I have a, I have a general comment about downtown parking.
Okay, this, this, this is a period of time to comment on the presentation. Excuse me, I'm speaking too quickly. This is the time to comment on the presentation, the first part of the presentation on COVID-19. If you'd like to wait for general public comment, we can pick that.
I will wait for general public comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. I see no one else waiting, so if there are no other comments and no other questions from council members, we'll move on to the next part of this report.
Good evening.
Linda Plasha.
Sorry, Sarah. I was just going to introduce myself. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. This is Linda Plasha, Recreation Services Manager, currently overseeing the Shelter and Welfare Branch for the Emergency Operations Center. Library and Recreation Staff have been working to identify and ensure the current welfare needs of our community are being addressed during the COVID-19 pandemic, with special attention to our most vulnerable population. Many agencies and organizations are providing meals, produce, pantry, and brown bags for all ages in our community. The Slow Food Bank works with several local programs to distribute food at multiple locations. Loaves and Fishes, the Paso Robles Joint Unified School District, and Meals That Connect provide service five days per week at a variety of sites. Demand for food service has more than doubled. Unfortunately, the distribution capacity has been able to keep up with the demand. We are also continuing to post a weekly schedule on the city website COVID-19 page. Paso Cares continues to provide daily meal service for people experiencing unsheltered homelessness in our community. Echo Staff coordinates the volunteer schedule and provides support for the meal service. They are also distributing safety bags with food, face masks, gloves, and hand sanitizer. Echo recently hired an emergency resource outreach specialist to work directly with people who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness to find solutions that will help them stay safe, nourished, and provide options to finding shelter. We are working with several agencies to facilitate a community-wide phone tree designed to reach isolated seniors in our community, ensuring they have information on access to food, prescriptions, senior shopping hours, and delivery services. We are also working with the Slow County Long-Term Care Ombudsman Office to ensure our local residential care facilities are in compliance with local guidelines and have the needed personal protective equipment for staff and residents. In Paso Robles, 16 childcare sites are open. The childcare site at Santa Rosa Academy in Atascadero has spaces for the children of essential workers, and some of the providers we talked to in Paso Robles expressed an interest in applying for emergency waivers to allow them to accept more children of essential workers. We are researching the capacity for adequate childcare during the phased reopening. Many of the closed providers reported that they would reopen when the schools reopen. However, we are unsure of what the closure of the Paso Robles Joint Unified School District sites for the remainder of the school year will mean for these providers. If our closed providers choose not to open when phase reopening begins, we may end up with a large number of children needing care as their parents are called back to work. School-aged children who did not previously require care because they were in school may now need full daycare as their parents are called back to work. We expect this situation to somewhat resolve itself by mid-June, given that daycare needs during the summer should not be impacted. And finally, an additional slide on the COVID-19 testing site. The state of California, as Jonathan just shared, is partnering with San Luis Obispo County and Optum Serve to increase testing for COVID-19 in our county. Yesterday, we opened a testing site in Paso Robles at the Veterans Center located at 240 Scott Street. The site is open weekdays from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they are scheduling 132 appointments per day. Testing is by appointment only. Insurance is accepted with no copay fee, and if you do not, do not have insurance, the state of California will pay for your test. And with that, I will turn it over to Heather Stevenson.
Thank you, Linda. Over the past month and a half, we've seen how our community has pulled together to support one another and stay Paso strong. One example comes from our city's recreation instructors. In mid-March, after the Shelter at Home order began, many instructors got creative and began offering free online opportunities to help residents stay active, all from the safety and comfort of their own homes. Using these activities as inspiration, the city's library and recreation staff collaborated to create Virtual Paso. This webpage contains an extensive list of free activities that anyone can enjoy from home to stay active, engaged, and entertained. Virtual Paso launched on March 27th, and since that time, there have been close to 500 visits to the page. In the Virtual Paso links, residents will find offerings from our recreation instructors along with recommendations from our staff. There's opportunities to create art together during daily videos from local kindergarten teacher Stormy Capillary, relax and move your body during ya-ya yoga activities from Paso's own Vanessa Orr, get your heart pumping during Zumba Gold with Christina Aversang, or enjoy a virtual storytime right from home, plus much more. The library and recreation staff encourage everyone to check out this new virtual activity resource accessible from the city's homepage under the COVID-19 updates in the City Spotlight section. Another new resource created by library and recreation staff is in direct support of the information gathered in the city's community surveys. It's called Be Well Paso and can also be found in the COVID-19 Updates section of the city website. This site launched on April 20th. On the Be Well Paso homepage, there are resource pages for all age groups from toddlers to seniors. Within each age group category, you'll find links to credible information sources, self-care tools, and activities for your mental health and wellbeing, including fitness, mindfulness, social connection, education, important hotline numbers, and links to some good news sources. On the Be Well Paso homepage, you'll also see a link to a mental health and wellness page. This page is filled with links to important resources, including how to access the Slow Hotline for free therapy services, a wealth of information in Slow County's Virtual Assistance Center, information about how to find therapy services here in Paso Robles, plus important insurance information regarding financial assistance for these services. New information is being updated and added regularly, including resources for our Spanish-speaking residents being added tomorrow. We encourage folks to check back often. Be Well Paso also features the Be Well Paso Weekly Challenge with simple daily activities to help you stay fit, productive, connected, and positive. There's the Just for Fun section to help you start each day with a smile. There's the Let's Move activities, which are simple movement ideas for each day of the week. The What Do, What to Do section features daily activities from cleaning a closet to deleting emails. And the final category is called It's All Good. From lighting a scented candle to starting a gratitude journal, these activities will enrich your body and soul. Next, I'd like to share something uplifting that's beginning to happen in the Paso Robles community. Hearts bearing messages of inspiration have started appearing around town over the last several weeks. From a pair of handmade hearts with the messages Paso Strong and We Are in This Together on the wall of the Starbucks drive-thru on Creston Road, to a thank you banner to essential workers in front of a residence on Ramblay, these positive messages are spreading joy and love to our residents. Building on what's been happening organically, last Thursday, the city announced the Happy Heart Hunt campaign. We're encouraging community members to create and display hearts bearing messages of inspiration like Paso Strong and some of the other wonderful messages you see here. There's been a lot of community excitement so far. Nearly 1,000 people have engaged with the Happy Heart Hunt posts on the Recreation Services Facebook page, and almost 80 post shares since last Thursday have happened. Residents are posting comments offering to make wooden hearts for others and are enjoying scavenger hunts around city park to search for hearts. KSBY, KPRL, Paso Robles Press and Daily News, and the Voice of Paso have all helped to spread the word about the campaign. It's really easy to get involved. We are encouraging folks to decorate hearts using anything they have on hand and display them at their homes or places of business. They can also search for hearts in the downtown area and their neighborhoods, all while respecting physical distancing. Beginning next week, our city vehicles will display hearts with the hashtag #PasoStrong on them. More information is available at prcity.com/recreation. This is a wonderful opportunity for our community to come together and demonstrate our Paso pride and can-do spirit. Finally, the city's library and recreation staff have created videos for the Paso Robles community that can be viewed on their homepages. The recreation video offers messages of inspiration to community members from our staff and instructors, while in the libraries video, staff offers suggestions for their favorite books, available digitally with your library card. I encourage you to check them out. Thank you, and I'll open it up to questions now.
Thank you very much. Again, this is not an action item. It is a presentation item. This is part two of three. I want to repeat for the public the number to call if you have a comment on any item tonight. That's eight zero five, eight six five, seven two, seven six. We already have had one person call in with a general public comment, and we have someone else waiting in line for general public comment later. I will ask the council if they have any comments on this portion of the report, starting again with Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, hi. Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for all the upbeat that's going on with the Paso Strong word. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Gregory.
I too would like to say thank you for all your efforts in keeping our community happy.
Councilman Hammond.
No, sir. Just want to say thank you to Heather. Very well done as far as the work that you guys are doing along with Linda and Julie as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Strong.
Yeah, same as everyone else. Thank you for everything.
I'm going to echo that. I think the attitude shown both by our staff and by the people in our community has been exemplary, very positive, and very heartwarming, very supportive, so we all appreciate that. Thank you so much. Now, we have one portion of this report left to go. I don't see anybody in queue to comment on this particular item, so we're going to go directly into the third portion of this report on COVID-19.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Sarah Johnson Rios, Assistant City Manager, and I wanted to first apologize to the public, if you're watching on live stream, for the delay and the visuals. We will make the slides that were associated with the prior portions of the presentation available online. So the last part of this presentation is regarding recovery, and there have been several announcements that the state and county have made since council has last met. We'd like to provide a brief overview of those and as much clarity as we can about what this means for Paso today. So I'll start with a brief overview of the state of California's recovery roadmap. On April 14th, Governor Newsom outlined six indicators that the state would consider when modifying the stay-at-home order. They include the ability of the state and key institutions to be able to test, contact trace, isolate, and support those who have been exposed, to protect those who are at the highest risk, handle patient surges, develop therapeutics, support physical distancing, and determine when to reinstate measures like stay-at-home if needed. As indicated on the next slide, the next step that the governor took was on April 28th, when he announced four resilience roadmap stages that California would use to guide its gradual reopening. We're currently in Phase 1, which is the preparation phase. Yesterday, the governor announced that he will be releasing criteria on Thursday of this week to allow for a gradual move into Phase 2, and the next slide provides additional information on that. The governor's decision to gradually move into Phase 2, which allows lower-risk workplaces to begin to reopen, was based on the report card that he issued yesterday indicating that key public health and preparedness metrics have been met. The governor stated that retail will be allowed to reopen with curbside pickup or delivery as early as this Friday. The governor also announced a new framework to allow counties to move more quickly through Stage 2 if they attest that they meet the state's readiness criteria and if the state approves their assessment. I'd like to also mention that the state is inviting residents to give their input about the California recovery roadmap at covid19.ca.gov. And with the next slide, I'll move into a brief overview of the county actions toward Last Friday, the county issued the Start Guide, Steps to Adapt and Reopen Together, which is available at readyslow.org. The county solicited input from a diverse group of stakeholders for this document, and a number of Paso leaders and community members provided input. Not all of that input is reflected in the Start Guide yet, but the county considers this a living document, and they stated today that they plan to issue an updated version of the guide with substantial additions and clarifications. The Start Guide includes a matrix and description of the county's proposed three phases of reopening and requirements under each phase. The county is also asking residents to provide input on the Start Guide via an online survey at readyslow.org. And as you can see on the next slide, that leaves us with a question of what happens next when we have these two frameworks for reopening. The Start Guide framework that the county released on Friday, together with the local epidemiological data and Slow County's healthcare capacity, demonstrates that the county is ready to move forward in our own measured way, should the state allow us to do so. Until then, we will be moving forward under the state's order and any revisions to that order. The county actually just issued a press release a few moments ago stating, clarifying this dynamic of state and county reopening plans. They state that they will not be able to implement the Start Guide until three things happen. First, the state needs to lift its modified shelter-at-home order. Second, the state needs to allow for additional local control. And third, then the county would issue another executive order to move us into Phase 1. So there are also several points of divergence that stand out between the Start Guide approach that the county has and the state's proposed approach. Namely, safety-based services, personal care businesses such as salons and gyms would not be allowed to reopen under the state's plan as quickly as they are proposed to reopen under the Start Guide. The county will continue to reconcile the Start Guide with the state's proposed plan and will provide more information as it becomes available. As the next slide shows, here's what we anticipate as of tonight for this week. We expect that the state will release more guidance on Thursday and an updated state order on Friday. Starting Friday, the state plans to allow retail businesses to have modified opening with curbside pickup and delivery, not in-store shopping as far as they've stated to date. And they will also allow the Associated Logistics and Manufacturing, that's related to retail, to reopen. It's not clear yet if our county will be allowed to do anything beyond that on Friday. We will, of course, continue to keep you updated as we learn more, and we remind everyone to tune into the county press briefings, which are currently scheduled for Wednesday and Friday at 3:15 p.m. Finally, as the next slide shows, local planning for recovery efforts in Paso Robles are underway. City staff is collaborating with the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Main Street, Travel Paso, the Wine Country Alliance, and the Hispanic Business Association to plan for Paso's economic recovery. The collaboration from all these groups during these unprecedented times has really been invaluable. The Chamber of Commerce has conducted several roundtable discussions with local businesses, and their input is being incorporated. One of the challenges we heard from businesses is the ability to provide for social distancing once they reopen, which will reduce permitted occupancy and still remain economically viable. So they're looking for So, they're looking for ways to strike that balance. As a result, with our partners, the city is exploring ways that we may be able to consider permitting the use of the public right-of-way in order to expand the space available for customers of our local businesses. We bring some specific items to council for consideration at the May 19th meeting, including potential use of sidewalks, downtown city park, or parklets. And with that, I'm available for any questions on this last portion of the presentation.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to add one thing. There was a statement in the governor's recent report on reopening, which referred specifically to rural counties who had successfully contained or been successful in containing and protecting the medical facilities for COVID-19 issues. I asked the county public health officer if she thought we qualified into that. She said she felt confident that we would as soon as the governor gave the go-ahead to move forward with those facets of the plan. So, that's just one little other bit of information in that. So, with that, we'll open this for comments from the council first. Again, this is presentation, no action required. Any comments or questions, Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. For Sarah, on the stakeholder groups, was there any other concerns besides just, I mean, I realize that most of our businesses are small, so is that their main concern once they open, that they just wouldn't be able to accommodate the six feet?
Great question. There are other concerns, and we're working with them to find ways that we can potentially address a number of items, but the items related to the public, to the use of public right-of-way is a first step that the city has the ability to influence more so than, for example, the direct loss of revenues that many businesses are facing. So, we're also working in the chamber to connect them to SBA resources and to continue to encourage them to apply for federal resources and state resources. And so, you know, we're also trying to work on the local level to implement what we can at the city level to help them, excuse me, to help them with that particular challenge.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yes, Sarah, I hope this question's not too difficult for you, but I have to ask it. So, what the state is allowing and what our Phase One is presented by the county is a little bit different. And my question is, is on these retail, smaller retail businesses, I don't know how they can provide retail services on the curb delivery if people can't shop inside their shop. Can you approach that question for me? How is that going to work?
That is a really good question. I think many people probably share that question, and I would say that we would be looking to the guidance that the state plans to issue, or states that they're planning to issue on Thursday in order to help businesses understand in what context they are able to reopen.
Yeah, and the reason why I have the comment, yeah, I have that comment because at Lowe's and other essential businesses, there's several people shopping, and they're going inside the stores, they're maintaining their distances, and I think for the most part, most of our small businesses can do that. But if we limit to just curbside pickup, it's not going to make much of an effect, I'm afraid, because it's a retail business. So, I think that it's really not, it's not opening anything because people can't go in and shop.
Right. My understanding would also be that the county's efforts to continue to work with the state to gain approval, to move into Phase One of the Start Guide reopening would address that. I think the question, as the mayor stated as well, is just how long it's going to take for the county to issue those readiness guidelines and to certify the county's readiness plan.
Yep. Okay, well, I sure hope that they improve the language to the county Phase One because it's much more clear and, I think, more feasible to help these businesses get started. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
I think the questions have been asked very well. I think the one about the small businesses is especially important because unless they have a great display window where they can show a lot of their merchandise, how do people who, especially if they're not used to going to that particular store, have any idea what's inside that store to buy? They have to do a better job of letting them market their products.
Thank you, and I would like to add that part of our input into the county's plan, which has not been included yet, but hopefully since it's been described as a living document, will be included at some time, was a Paso Robles combination business and community process that would identify businesses that were committed to the regimen necessary to protect against infection, so designate that with signage in their stores, call upon people to continue to participate in social distancing and other things, and base more of the occupancy of the stores on their square footage or other items that would allow them to permit people to actually come into the stores. So, we put together a program that we submitted to the county called COVID-19, Kick It While It's Down. As long as we can keep the infection rate down, we think businesses should be allowed more flexibility in opening their doors. So, hopefully, that'll be something that comes forward as part of the plan as it evolves in the future. I see no one in the queue for this. If there are no other comments from council, we're going to thank you for those presentations, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda. We have two presentations tonight. The next presentation is for National Public Works Week, and I will read that proclamation, and our Director of Public Works, Mr. McKinley, is on hand to offer a few remarks after that. So, "National Public Works Week, for as public works professionals are essential to protecting public health and safety, as exemplified during the current COVID-19 pandemic, and focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of Paso Robles. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, or engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems and systems essential for our citizens, and these public works professionals have extensive education and training, including licenses and certifications. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Paso Robles to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, and speaking on behalf of the entire Paso Robles City Council, do hereby designate the week of May the 17th through the 23rd as National Public Works Week, and urge our community to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life." Mr. McKinley?
Thank you, Mayor Martin, members of the council. On behalf of the women and men who are your local Public Works Department, we are honored to serve the community, to provide core, essential, life and health, safety services every day. We provide safe drinking water every minute of every day, wastewater treatment, which protects not only public health but the environment, traffic signals, and a number of other services each and every day. We maintain the police vehicles and fire vehicles to make sure they're operable, and we are honored to serve this community, honored to build, operate, and maintain essential infrastructure, and we are grateful to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your service, and thank you for those comments. We appreciate it. Up next, we have the National Travel and Tourism Proclamation. Stacy Jacob of Travel Paso will speak briefly after the presentation of this proclamation. This is National Travel and Tourism Week, whereas travel has a critical role in Paso Robles and the nation's economic prosperity, and whereas a robust travel industry has provided significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than $2.6 trillion in economic output last year, with $1.1 trillion spent directly by travelers in the United States. And whereas travel has been the foundation of a healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 15.8 million jobs in 2019, including 9 million directly in the travel industry and 6.8 million in other industries. Whereas spending by travelers has aided state and local governments alike, generating $180 billion in tax revenue last year to support essential services and programs. Whereas travel generates more than $450 million in annual economic impact and more than $6.2 million in transient occupancy tax, and employs more than 4,500 employees in Paso Robles. Whereas meetings, events, and incentive travel have always been a core business function that helps companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and customers, and reward business accomplishments. Whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. And whereas businesses and workers in the travel industry were some of the first and hardest hit by the economic crisis resulting from coronavirus, whereas travel and tourism-dependent businesses, 83% of which are small businesses, depend on our community's support through and after this crisis, whereas the leaders of our state, regional, and local travel and tourism industry truly encapsulate the spirit of our community and our nation. Whereas even while Paso Robles cannot welcome visitors in person at this time, the spirit of travel and hospitality remains the enduring ethos of the travel industry in our community. And whereas the spirit of travel will be a necessary and prominent component of our return to everyday life and must be supported and protected, now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, speaking on behalf of the entire Paso Robles City Council, do hereby proclaim May the 3rd through the night as National Travel and Tourism Week in Paso Robles, and urge the citizens of our community to join me in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in our economic recovery, growth, and sustainability into the future. Is Ms. Jacob with us?
Yes, I'm here, thank you. Honorable Mayor, and thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for this presentation tonight and honor. It's, I think, it's without, no words can replace what you just mentioned, the importance that tourism plays in our community and to celebrate this year what we're calling the spirit of travel and tourism in light of the pandemic that we're going through. If we didn't already know it, we are experiencing the importance that travel and tourism plays in our community. It not only creates an amazing economic base, but it creates a lifestyle that all of our local residents get to enjoy every day, and we look forward to working collaboratively with our partners as we look at the economic revival moving forward. So, thank you so much for your kind words.
Thank you, and thank you for being with us tonight, and as we remember all the businesses that have been struggling during this pandemic, we certainly do remember our tourism industries at whom we've looked so much in the past to support our community's quality of life. Thank you for that. We come now to the point of our agenda where we set aside for general public comments. This is a time when people are invited to make comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. If you would like to speak to a specific public comment item later in the agenda, we will have public comment time set aside when that agenda is heard. So, at this time, I would invite people, if you have not already, to call our line right now, that number 805-865-7276. And when you speak, please give us your name so everyone knows who's speaking, and we will give you three minutes. So, with that, we go to the lines. I understand Mr. Dale Guston is here to make a public comment again, so Dale, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Dale Guston, 945 Spring Street, and I'd like to call the council's attention to the county public health department's report on this, our trying to recover, and it's under readyslow.org or recoverycentralcoast.org. And particularly, I'd like you to look at Page Six and Page 17 of that document because it's very relevant to what we're going through in this recovery thing, and I stated about my opinion about the parking, we need to follow San Luis Obispo's lead in making the parking free in Paso Robles so that we can get the tourism back in. I remember when Stacy was a part of the Wine Alliance and helped expand that, and I was in there in the initial, very first Wine Taste Dean Festival and helped start that. So, I'm well aware of the importance of tourism to this county, and we need to bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Jan Albon has been very patiently waiting. Jan, are you with us? Welcome. It's time to make your comment now. You bet.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Coyle Run. At the city council meeting on March 3rd, the city approved a six-month contract renewal with Dixon Resources for their support on our downtown parking program. Within a week of that contract approval, our city was virtually closed down. At the April 21st city council meeting, in a discussion of how the city was taking steps in cutting the budget due to the financial impact on our city, Mr. Fruchy talked of the city canceling certain contracts. The next day, I emailed Mr. Fruchy asking if one of those canceled contracts was for Dixon Resources. The answer was no. His comments were, "We haven't canceled the Dixon contract as we're working on either modifying or ending the program." While I appreciate the effort and the due diligence by the city to evaluate the merits of the program, I have to ask, if our businesses are closed and no one is downtown, and they haven't been downtown since mid-March, and if a number of our city services have either been cut or reduced, and other contracts have been canceled, why wouldn't you cancel this contract? We've been paying $5,750 a month to Dixon for two months to do nothing because there is no parking program in force for them to support. That six-month contract equates to $34,500. Surely, we have other programs, vital programs, that need that money to sustain themselves and benefit the entire community. Even if the downtown businesses open tomorrow, the city isn't going to hop back on that parking enforcement. You're going to do everything in your power and use every marketing tool you have to get people back downtown to eat, shop, and go to the show. Just as Mr. Guston said just today, the city of San Luis issued the statement, and I quote, "Once the emergency is lifted, parking operations will still be issuing free parking and other incentives to get people to come back down to the downtown community." So, along with my question of why are we still paying Dixon, I'm asking the city council to cancel that contract until the downtown gets back to some sort of normalcy, and you can make a decision of whether to continue the program or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate it. I have one other person under general public comments, and according to the notification I have here, Mr. Blackburn wishes to comment on the city's waste disposal contract. That's an issue that I have accused myself over, so I am going to turn this phone call over to you, Councilman Gregory, as Mayor Pro Tem. I am going to silence my phone, and I will wait for staff to send me a note that that public comment has concluded.
Okay, this is Steve Gregory, Mayor Pro Tem. Go ahead, Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you very much, council. My name is Dan Blackburn. I've lived in Paso Robles for 25 years. Two weeks from now, according to the current schedule, council is going to be voting on a 33-plus percent rate hike for garbage service, and at the same time extending a contract that has never been put out to bid. I don't understand how the city can move forward with a large increase passed along to the ratepayers, void of any effort to allow, to be heard. It seems to me trying to conduct a fair and open public hearing in the middle of a pandemic is certainly not in the public interest. I also think this 218 process directly conflicts with the executive orders signed by the governor. The first order recommends limits upon attendance at public meetings. How can the city conduct a public hearing on such an important issue and expect ratepayers to jeopardize their health in order to comment? Activities like gathering signatures on a petition, going door-to-door to gather signatures, having meetings to discuss these important civic issues, these can't happen under the present circumstances. present circumstances. And I don't think, neither should the Prop eighteen public meeting on the nineteenth of this month. I think your council should postpone this process, which appears to me to be in direct violation of orders of the governor, and it is hardly in the best interest of ratepayers. If anyone wants additional information, go to playfairpasso.org for more information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Prior to having Mr. Martin come back on, Mr. Fruchy, do you think we should respond to Mr. Blackburn's comments before Steve comes back on?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, if you do wish for staff response, yes, sir, it should be before the mayor comes back.
Okay. First, I'll ask, are there any other callers on hold?
No, council member Gregory.
So if Tom, either yourself or Mr. McKinley or somebody, could you just respond to that request by Mr. Blackburn?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I think there are actually two components to the response. One is on the substance of the process. For instance, Mr. Blackburn indicated that the council on the nineteenth would be asked to extend the agreement, and I think Mr. McKinley should comment on the substance of what's going to happen the nineteenth. But I'd also ask our interim city attorney, Kimberly Hood, to comment on the assertion by Mr. Blackburn that the two eighteen process is in conflict with the governor's orders regarding the holding of meetings during the pandemic. So maybe Kimberly, if you'd go first.
Sure. So on the governor's orders, the orders allow the city to hold a teleconference meeting and don't require that you have a location open because of the concerns with in-person contact and exposure due to the COVID nineteen. But it does allow the meetings to continue as it, as we've been doing. The public hearing process allows for the members of the public to make comments. They can submit written comments. Protests were already required to be submitted in writing, so that has not changed. And so the notices were sent out and mailed to customers' record and property owners forty-five days, at least forty-five days before the May nineteenth hearing. So if, the way it is set up with individuals allowed to call in, you meet the standard for the public hearing. But if you were to continue the hearing, you'd have to re-notice, which requires mailing out new notices.
So Kimberly, given that the Proposition two eighteen was passed by the voters as a constitutional amendment, which takes precedence, the governor's executive orders or Proposition two eighteen, if there were a conflict between the two?
Well, first, I don't think there's a conflict. If there was a, a conflict, the executive orders would probably carry the day to the extent it was related to public health concerns. But again, I don't see any conflict here between the requirements that you send out the notices, that you hold a meeting where the public can participate, and submit written protests as we're doing.
Thank you. Mr. McKinley, could you comment, please, on the substantive portion of the?
Yeah, as you pointed out, Mr. Blackburn is wrong on the notion that we're looking to extend the contract. That's not part of this action. And the, the other issue is that while there will be a public hearing on the nineteenth that, as people are calling in now, people would be able to call into, it's really important to remember that following the Proposition two eighteen process means that more than twelve thousand notices were sent out in our community at the end of March, and people have had forty-five days, and every one and every account has had an opportunity to make their feelings known in writing to the city. So while people can submit a protest during the public hearing, they certainly are not required to do that. So this is one of the processes that people could do entirely without having anything to do with the public hearing. And so that's the process that's underway. It's what's set by law, and we're following that to the T.
So, Mr. Fruchy, also, Mr. Blackburn mentioned something about how we've never legally given the contract. I can't remember what he thinks his exact words were, but he said we, we haven't properly followed the contract process, or he said we've never legally created a contract with our current carrier.
So just instead of responding directly to the comment, I'll just give you the overview of the current situation. We do have a franchise agreement, which is the equivalent of contract with Paso Waste and Recycle. That is an agreement that was approved by a prior city council and then extended in order to allow Paso Waste and Recycle to invest considerable funds in meeting new state requirements. That agreement runs through twenty twenty-seven, and it's important to note that because of the extensive investment in capital equipment, so, so for example, a garbage truck, which prob, each one probably costs, Mr. McKinley would know better, but my guess is somewhere in the order of three-quarters of a million dollars, all told, somewhere between a half and three-quarters of a million dollars. In order to make those investments and receive loans in order to do that, it's absolutely incumbent upon the contractor to have a period of time, usually seven years, in which to amortize the investment in, in that piece of equipment. So the nature of the waste hauling business is for relatively long contracts, but there is a requirement in those contracts to ensure that the, there is both a rate study and a analysis by an independent outside third party of the cost effectiveness of the services being provided and to ensure there's no significant waste or anything that is not strictly in accordance with appropriate laws. So that process has been undertaken over the past year, and Paso Waste and Recycling received glowing grades by the outside analysis and outside auditor. So Mr. Blackburn does raise an absolutely valid point. Should the city go out to a competitive process for its waste hauler going forward? That's not something that can be done overnight. It is not part of this waste process, rate process, but the council certainly has the ability to examine that approach and decide if at some point in the future, prior to the expiration of the current agreement, that the city should go out to a competitive process. And that's certainly something the council can address at any time. It doesn't have to be on May nineteenth. It could be at any time in the future.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. So at this time, somebody to contact Mayor Martin and have him take the meeting back over. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm back.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Mayor, we did complete the public comment on that particular topic. At this point, we do, maybe you should ask, or we'll want to ask Melissa if there are any additional people waiting for public comment, but we know of none at the moment.
Okay, I don't have that, anything on the list, but if there is, let me know. There were a couple of comments made about downtown parking. I'm hoping that someone on staff can, number one, outline the policy we've undertaken since the shelter-at-home order regarding the enforcement of downtown parking rules, the status of the parking consultant's contract, and options for how that will be handled in the future.
I think that's handled by our police chief, Ty Lewis, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I am here, Your Honor. Thank you for the question. So currently, as the public commenter noted, that we aren't doing any enforcement action downtown. And you'll also, also as part of our contract is, it's not a flat monthly fee that we're paying for consulting services. They bill us by the hour, depending on, and it's amount not to exceed. So if we have work for them, then we pay them. If we don't have work, then we don't. So currently, we do have a contract that we're looking at, you know, where, as everybody knows, trying to make adjustments to the parking program and prove it where possible, doing studies, meeting with stakeholders. So there's been a lot of work that's been going on, and oftentimes, those bills get paid at various times, depending on when bills go out. So that might be what the commenter saw when she saw various bills being paid to Dixon Resources. But as she noted right now, at some point, we're going to have to make a public, or a policy decision, rather, on what approach we're going to be taking to the parking program and what that means for the long-term viability of the program. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Very good. Just to, to put a fine point on it, we aren't enforcing parking violations at the current time. Is that correct?
Your Honor, that's correct. We, we realize that there's not a lot going on down there, and we're not, we had several people there on Friday, and we weren't enforcing any of the provisions of our parking program at that time.
And we are not automatically cutting a check to consultant regardless of whether there was any work done or not?
That's correct, Your Honor.
And this contract going forward will be under the scrutiny of our budget process in the light of the challenges presented by COVID nineteen, just as all other contracts are?
That's right, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Just to make sure everybody gets a chance, council follow-up comments on this? Councilwoman Garcia?
No, sir, none from me.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
None from me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Just to confirm, Ty, that we do have a contract and it's basically on hold, or it's only being used when needed? And does that extend the length of contract term?
I'm not aware that it extends the length of the term. I'll have to look into that. I believe that it has a definite expiration date with a not-to-exceed amount. So that, there's been some months where they've worked more and billed us more, and there's been some months where they've worked less and billed us less. So that's the way the contract is currently structured.
But basically, we're not paying a flat fee monthly, it's just as needed?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Strong?
Yes, I'm wondering, and my question would be, are there any plans to let the public know that we're, at least at the moment, not enforcing any time limits on parking downtown?
I think the city manager has made, made some of those comments in recent, in recent weeks and during various conversations. Of course, that's a, you know, it's, that's a, that's a tough decision to make. We're not putting a lot of resources into, you know, enforcement at this time, A, because there's not a lot of people down there, but we're also very conscious of the social distancing and how we're utilizing our staff, too. So it's been an internal decision at this point. If the city council and the city manager would like to make, go a different direction and formalize any of those processes or policies, then of course, the police department's going to take direction from, from, you know, those, those actions.
Thank you very much. Chief, I just want, I want council and the public to know that from the beginning on this, I did make contact with our Main Street organization, also our Chamber of Commerce. Also, I've responded to numerous requests from the community regarding this, and the response that you've heard tonight has been the response that's been given since day one. That being said, you can't communicate too much, and I would advocate putting a notice on the city's website regarding parking and where we are and where we're going from this point forward. Hearing no objection. We are going to move forward with our agenda now. I will ask the city manager if we have any items to be deferred on the agenda tonight.
No, sir.
Thank you. We come now to our consent calendar. Consent calendar is a list of items that we don't believe require individual discussion. That being said, anyone on the council, anyone in the community, may ask a brief question, make a brief comment before we make a decision on these items. Anyone on the council or in the community who wishes to withdraw an item may do so for separate consideration. It's our usual practice that if that happens, the item withdrawn will go to the end of the agenda. That being said, I'll go to the council for comments or any items to be withdrawn. Councilwoman Garcia?
None.
Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I do have one question on item six, and it's a quick question, if I can ask.
Please, go ahead.
Are we, are we changing our, the, I see the resolutions, but are we changing our contract with who's doing the landscape and lighting contract now for us?
Councilman Gregory, this is Frida Berman, Maintenance Superintendent. Those contracts are up for renewal in December, so at this point, we are not.
And who, who are we currently using, Frida?
We are using two contractors, Katie Janney Landscape and Martinelli Landscape.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
None.
Councilman Strong?
No, sir.
Very good. I see no one in the queue online for this, so I will bring it back to the council and ask for approval of the consent calendar.
Councilman Gregory here? I'd like to make?
Councilman Gregory?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agendas, items four through seven.
Councilman Strong, seconds.
Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
And Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Before we go on, I'd ask the city manager, please, to give us a brief presee of what we've done, so people who have not looked at the agenda online can know what actions we've taken tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight on the consent calendar, the council approved four items. The first was the city council minutes from April seventh. The second was the council's receipt of a warrant register, and the warrant register is the list of checks the city cuts to secure the goods and services that it uses in providing the services the city does. And this warrant registered for two weeks was for one point two million dollars, much of which was for ongoing capital improvement projects, including the Spring Street project, the Twenty-First Street Reservoir, which is a waterfront project, and a series of upgrades to our wastewater lift stations in preparation for likely power outages this summer under PG&E's P S P S program. In addition, the council initiated the annual levy of landscaping lighting district number one and drainage maintenance district number two thousand and eight hyphen one for the next fiscal year. And that's a process under which the city commissions an engineer's report that determines what will be the funding necessary to maintain the landscaping and lighting and drainage maintenance facilities for the upcoming year, and that's done by an outside engineering firm. And the council then receives that report, makes it available to the public, and then schedules a public hearing to consider the costs and the rates that will be necessary to support those costs. And the council has scheduled the public hearing for June second. And this year, there is no rebalancing necessary in, in any of the districts or in any of the suburbs. And then finally, the council made several appointments to advisory bodies for the Community Services Department. The council reappointed Sharon Williams and appointed Mary Lou Gomez, the Library Board of Trustees. The council reappointed Dale Breckow and Jean Messina to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The council appointed Rebecca Hallett to the Senior Advisory Committee, and we want to thank, on behalf of the council and the community, all of those individuals for volunteering to serve on those very important advisory bodies. And then finally, because of the pandemic and school being suspended, the council directed staff to suspend youth commission activity until the start of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. That is all of the actions the council took on consent tonight, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you for that. We move on now to public hearings. Item number eight is waiver of penalties and interest for monthly water sewer service, deferral of business license tax renewals, and waiver of penalties and interest.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So item eight, as you just mentioned, is the urgency ordinances regarding the waiver of penalties and interest for monthly water sewer service and deferral of the business license tax renewals, with a similar waiver of penalties and interest. So as the council may recall, at the last city council meeting, we reviewed a number of relief measures because of all the serious financial impacts that were occurring as a result of COVID nineteen. Some of those, and I apologize, that looks like my slide. I think I tried to get fancy with the bullet points and failed, but the, the first two bullet points were simply just a recap of the city measures, which were the eviction relief, as you recall, you adopted the moratorium that the county adopted, and then also deferred T O T. And then at that same meeting on April twenty-first, the council considered some other items and asked that we bring back, then, to urgent- and asked that we bring back, then to urgency ordinances for the city water sewer waiver of late penalties and interest, and business license tax deferral, which is currently due June 30th. So there are my bullet points appearing now. So if we could move to the next slide, please. So the first item is the water and sewer penalties. And so, they're currently under the municipal code, the late penalties are 10%, and they apply when the bill, you have five days to pay your utility bill. The bill is due on the 20th. If you don't pay the bill in time, then the 10% penalty is accrued. So the urgency ordinance that we're proposing this evening would waive any interest or penalties for the late water and sewer bill payments during the emergency. And importantly, it doesn't waive the sewer and water fees themselves, it just allows the penalty. The business license tax item, as you know, the business license annual tax renewals are due on June 30th. Late renewals are subject to a penalty of 20% to paid in July, with an additional 10% penalty for each month of payment late thereafter, up to the amount of the business license tax due. The proposed urgency ordinance would extend that deadline, that June 30th deadline, to August 31st, 2020, without any late payment of penalties. Again, like the water and sewer fees, this is not a waiver of the business license tax itself, that would still be due, but extends that to August 31st, which is the same date that you already granted for the TOT deferral. So again, the taxes still be due, but it gives businesses flexibility and adjustment and timing of those bills. But the businesses also still have the option of taking advantage of the early discount renewal that is provided in your municipal code. So if a payment is made by May 31st for the annual renewal, the business is entitled to a 10% discount, and this urgency ordinance does not change that. So that takes us to the recommendation.
Go ahead, Kimberly. It can take a few seconds for the slide to change.
There we go. So the recommendation is to adopt two urgency ordinances. The first is an urgency ordinance to the city council suspending sections 14.04.170 and 14.16.060 of municipal code regarding penalties for non-payment of water and sewer charges and declaring the urgency thereof. The second is to adopt an urgency ordinance to the city council extending the time for the payment of applicable business license taxes and waiving penalties and interest during such time of the extension and declaring the urgency thereof. Because these are urgency ordinances, each ordinance required a four-fifth vote. So with that, I'm available to answer questions, as is Ryan Cornell. If he has questions about either one of these. With that, I will pass it back to Mayor Martin.
Thank you very much for that. We will start with council questions. This is before we go to public comments. So any council questions of staff, beginning with Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, so I was looking at the recommendation here. So on the water, non-payment of water sewage charges, you're also waiving, we would also be waiving the late fee, or if there was one, or just non-payment?
Correct. It would be waiving, there would be no late fees.
No late fees as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I had a question for Kimberly. So I understand the waiver, the penalties and interest. So how does the staff deal with, let's say by August, we're back to normal in the process? Do we set up a payment plan with individuals that did not make those payments, or how do we deal with that?
Yes, so there's, that's a good question. And so there's actually a provision, there's actually a number of provisions in the law that require, before any water is ever shut off, that you would have a payment plan in place. You have to reach out to customers if they meet certain requirements. So if we have customers that aren't able to then pay their actual bill, despite the waiver of the late penalty, late fees and penalties, there are steps under the law that we would be looking to, with respect to entering into payment plans and other agreements of that sort.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
My questions have all been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have no one in the queue, and no one provided written comments, so I will close public comment on this. Bring it back to the council. We have two actions before us, and as the city attorney has said, these are urgency items, which means they have to be passed on a minimum of four fifths vote. So I would entertain a motion on the first action.
So this is Steve Gregory. I'd like to make the motion.
Please go ahead.
First recommendation is to adopt the urgency ordinance, number XXXA of the city council of the City of Paso Robles, comma California, suspending sections 14.04.170 and 14.16.060 of the Paso Robles Municipal Code regarding penalties for non-payment of water and sewer charges and declaring the urgency thereof. You want to-
Strong, second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
And Mayor Martin?
Aye. Issue passes four to one. Do I have a motion on the second action?
Steve Gregory, I'd like to move that we adopt an urgency ordinance, number XXXB of the city council of the City of Paso Robles, California, extending the time for payment of applicable business licenses and waiving penalties and interest during such time of extension and declaring the urgency thereof.
Strong, seconds.
Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Move on now to item number nine. Under discussion, update on process and structure of the proposed fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Mr. Prichy?
Thank you, Your Honor. And this is a update. It's not a decision item tonight, but certainly, staff always welcomes council direction. The budget has three regular city council meetings to go before adoption will be requested of the council at the last meeting in June. And as the council knows, members of the public may not, the state of California requires that every municipality adopt a balanced budget prior to June 30th of the year, and that city budgets are required to go by fiscal year starting on July 1st. And a balanced budget does not mean, especially in an instance like now, that revenues will equal expenditures, but the city must ensure that between revenues and any use of reserves, it can cover all of the budget expenditures. The council has already directed staff to prepare a one-year budget this year with full updates after the first and second quarter, so that would be either in October or in January of the coming months. And the council has already directed staff to prepare a budget for the general fund that includes two options. One would be that the city would maintain 20% reserves as a minimum reserve balance between now and the end of June 2021, and that is in full accord with current council policy. And then the second option would be the city would maintain reserves of 30% of general fund expenditures through that same period. And the reason for that, based on council direction, is because of the uncertain depth and length of the economic fallout of the pandemic, as well as the risk of some other crisis happening over these next 15 months. A 20% reserve level minimum would require $3.3 million worth of reductions in the general fund budget, over and above those that have already been implemented this current year. And as you heard from a prior caller to the council on the previous item, the city already has taken steps such as implementing what's essentially a hiring freeze, except for a few very high-party positions, including a police dispatcher and two police officers. In addition, the city has canceled a number of contracts, not all contracts, because some we were still receiving current value for, and the belief was to cancel the contract and then have to go out and get someone new to advise us, the demobilization, mobilization costs were not worth it. And then finally, the city has already reduced discretionary expenditures, deferred capital projects, and taken other steps to reduce both the capital budget and the operating budget. As I said, however, for fiscal year 2021, in order to meet the minimum 20% reserve goal, an additional $3.3 million worth of reductions would be necessary. That is out of a 40-plus million dollar general fund budget. In order to meet the 30% minimum reserve balance, a total of $7.7 million worth of reductions, over and above those already implemented this year, would be necessary. So the approach that's being taken in the budget for the general fund is to establish 20% reserves as the baseline, and so that the council, if it chose to adopt the 20% minimum reserve, would have a fully balanced budget based on the actions in that baseline for 2021. And then the staff will be preparing a series of decision packets for the council to consider, which are essentially reductions in the level of services and the programs currently being offered by the city that would be necessary to achieve the 30% reserve balance. That way, the city council can accept or reject any one of those decision packets that occur between the 20% minimum reserve and the 30% minimum reserve values. And in this way, the council is balancing the city's long-term financial stability and risk of some future crisis against the need for near-term services that our residents and businesses depend upon, especially in this era where they're hurting so significantly themselves. Approximately 50% of our general fund budget is related to personnel. Therefore, any of these decision packets are likely to not only reduce services to the public, but also reduce staffing costs and staffing levels. And that's something, both of which we take very seriously. We would not be recommending across-the-board cuts. A lot of cities over past years have tended to say that the reduction should be taken equally or proportionally across the board by all departments. That is not how we intend to do this. We clearly want to ensure that city council priorities that have been established in prior city council vision exercises are adhered to, so that the highest-party services continue as they are intended. And finally, in order to prepare this budget and bring back recommendations over the next three council meetings, we are initiating discussions with key stakeholders, city employees, both unrepresented and represented, and our residents and businesses. So for example, we conducted a survey of residents and a city, a survey of businesses over the last month, and those both were very highly subscribed to. We got great feedback and great input from a large number of residents and a large number of businesses. Last time I checked, we had over 2,300 residential responses and several hundred business responses. And in addition, we are, we have sent out a mailer, which essentially initiated a conversation to give the community an update on where we were and ask for feedback. And we're taking that feedback, working through our processes, and we'll be sending out a second mailer in a week that continues the conversation, shares what we've done, based on what we heard the first time around, and asks for additional feedback. Some of that relates to budget, some relates to just how badly people are hurting because of the pandemic and what they need as a result in terms of additional services, whether from the city, the county, or others. That all relates back to the budget and the budget process and the budget development. And finally, as indicated, we would be meeting with key stakeholders, including the Hispanic Business Alliance, the Chamber of Commerce, Travel Paso, Line Country Alliance, and Main Street, and the intent there is twofold. One, as Assistant City Manager Sarah Johnson-Rios indicated earlier, the level of cooperation amongst those six stakeholders and the city is at an all-time high, and it's truly needed. I'm glad it's happening. I wish it could happen all the time, but certainly now it's absolutely needed to make sure we do what's best for the community on a united front and a consistent front. But in addition, four of those six have annual agreements with the city where we provide funds to assist them in their operations, and we're working to see, given the city's budget shortfall, what amendments can be made to those unions to reduce the load on the general fund. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is, in brief form, the status of the budget process and structure at this point. But we certainly would welcome questions and direction from you as you suggest.
Thank you. We do have one person waiting in the line for a comment, so we'll start off, as usual, with questions of staff. We'll go to the public for comment, and then we'll make our comments known. So, Councilwoman Garcia, any questions of staff?
No, sir, not yet.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I have a question, and I, either Tom or Ryan. Tom, I wanted to find out, in your projections for next year, for the $3.3 million shortfall, is the solar farm potential income not included in that?
Mr. Cornell, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, Mr. Gregory, the solar farm is not included in any of the projections for next year.
So if that does come online, that would certainly help our situation?
Absolutely.
That's all my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, Tom, the way I'm looking at this, essentially, you know, when we have 50% of our budget is people, and the services that they provide, obviously, I mean, that's a big chunk of that 7.7. And the way I see it, again, if we're going to come down to 30% reserves, then we're looking for 7.7 reduction in budget. And, you know, that's going to be a fine balance, in my opinion, to keep the services that are essential. But yet, if we have to talk with our unions and staff, basically, it's cost reductions would be the first thing I would think of, and then, you know, making some sort of agreement. I think we have latitude in our agreements now, don't we, to open up discussions if we have to do that instead of laying off?
Yes, sir. We do have reopeners clauses with our three parking groups, and it's absolutely imperative that we have those discussions, because certainly, although personnel will be impacted, we don't want to balance the budget on the backs of our employees. We want to make sure that any employee cost reductions or position reductions are only commensurate with the reductions in services that we can offer the community.
Well, the other thing I was thinking of, too, is that we have an election coming up, and I think clearly, you know, we've all known that we're going to take a big hit on this, and that maybe the robles of this city are going to have to step up and think about maybe a supplemental tax. In other words, what do they want to see Paso Robles to become? And if there's an agreement that we can implement a half cent or maybe a 1% tax for a period of time to get us through or recover, basically, from this hit, I think that's something we need to put on the table and have you guys come back with information on that, on what it would look like, and then, you know, also, all related to services rendered because of it, or despite of it in that case. But I think that's going to be part of the puzzle here, in my opinion.
Yes, sir. We'll be glad to do that.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to save my comments until after we hear from the public, if there's any talk, and it comes back to us. But for questions, my question is, are we being very clear in our discussions and in the information we're releasing to the public, the difference between the general fund budget and our special fund budgets? Those budget, those budgets that come from different sources of money. For instance, water and sewer come from, specifically from fees that are charged based on cost. Airport is separate funding, and that comes mostly from federal government, et cetera. So that, are we going to make that totally clear so that the public understands how much money is in the real budgets, and how much is not touched, we're not able to touch by one budget into another?
So fund accounting is, I believe, unique to the public sector, so I do not imagine that most people in our community understand fund accounting, and certainly, that is a requirement that we do whatever is necessary to ensure they understand the various pots of money that we have, and that laws allow- understand the various pots of money that we have and that laws allow us to and require us to maintain separate. So, for example, some revenue gained from customers as a result of their water bills, we can't use that for anything but the Water Enterprise Fund. We can't say, oh, the general fund's short, let's take some money that came in from water customers and use that for the general fund. Absolutely not. It can go the other way around. So if the water fund is short and the council so chose, general funds could be used to augment water revenues. So there's just a lot of complexity to that, and I certainly wouldn't affirm to at the moment that we've done everything possible to ensure our public fully understands because it's complex. But we will do that to the budget process, and it's always an education process, two-way, that we share the details and the constraints we have, and the public shares with us what they desire and what they, what their priorities are.
Okay. And a parallel to that is making the public, are we going to be able to somehow make everybody understand that many of our employees work strictly under special funds and others work under general funds so that they, they understand where, where the personnel costs come from also?
Another good point, our budget document does make that clear so people could refer to our current budget document and explain the various funds and identifies the number of employees of each classification that work and are paid for out of each fund. But we can also make sure we do that in the budget process coming up.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. We do have one person in the queue to make comment. No written comments on this, so I believe Mr. Guston has been waiting. Dale, are you with us?
Dale Guston, 945 Spring Street. And I'm looking at the page that talks about this, but I don't see any proposed budget attached. I'm hoping that that is attached before the May 19 hearing. And, of course, my usual comment is, you wasted a million dollars on that parking study, and it doesn't work. The only part that works was the part that Main Street went along with to start with, and that is providing employee parking. But otherwise, time parking would have worked instead of paid parking, and it would have been a lot cheaper. We wouldn't have to pay for all those, the maintenance, and it would have been cheaper to, to maintain. And, because you're never going to pay for those kiosses with the fees being collected. We know that. And you're never going to pay for the salaries of the people monitoring those things. So please consider these things when you're getting that budget, proposed budget worked over. And, and as you proclaimed in your proclamation of National Travel and Tourism Week, this area, especially Paso Robos, is very dependent on tourism. And your Chamber, your Main Street, and the line, and Paso, Travel Paso, those organizations are the only organizations that really do beneficial work to get those tourism people that come to our town. And our hands are tied now, but if you look at page, no, I only referred you to page six of the recoverycentralpost.org report, I would also refer you to page 20, 21, and 22, and there's an outline. And the sooner we get to page three, the better this town's going to be, and we'll get our sales tax coming in again, which you guys need to meet your budget.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. No one else waiting, no one else waiting to speak? I will extrapolate one question from that comment, and that is timing on seeing an actual rough proposed budget, Mr. City Manager?
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It'll come to you in phases. We will separate out the, excuse me, the enterprises, water, wastewater, and airport, and other sub-funds from the general fund. In addition, we'll be bringing to you decision packets on both capital projects as well as the operating budget. But by the time you've finished those three upcoming meetings, you will have a comprehensive budget proposal to act on, on June 19th.
Very good.
Or whatever the date is in June, I'm sorry.
Bring you back to the council now. This is not an action item and is for discussion, although I'm sure staff wants to hear our viewpoints on this. Some have already been expressed. I'll start off with Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So as we have to look at this in the big picture, will we get numbers of how much is required for each department to run and how much we can cut back and things like that? How much each department has personnel, how much it takes to run them?
Yes, ma'am. So if you think of the current budget document, you get, in the beginning of the document, you have a total citywide by fund and overall, and then the budget is broken up by department and program. So, for instance, the Community Services Department, that we talked about earlier tonight, has a series of programs, parks maintenance, facilities maintenance, library, recreation services. And so the budget proposal will be broken out at that level and even a finer level so you can make decisions drilled down to the level you, you see fit.
And will, could we do that on different timelines, like quarterly?
So this year's unique will be, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. This year's unique, we will be bringing, we will be bringing to you the budget for your adoption by June 30th. But in addition, each of the first two quarters next year, you've already directed us to be ready to bring it back to you for major revision if you see fit, minor revision if you see fit. And the primary reasons for that were, number one, the uncertainty of predicting our revenue situation next year, given all of the changes going on in the economy right now. And then, number two, the course of the pandemic. We don't know if we're going to get a second wave and how big it's going to be. We don't know if this virus doesn't continue its high level of contagion in summer, dry, hot weather. So there's a lot we have to learn, there's a lot we have to know, and it gives us a chance at each of the three, two quarters to make any adjustments in the budget you want to make. For example, you could choose to, at the end of June, adopt a budget that has, let's say, maintenance of 26% reserves for the year. And then if the first quarter goes very well, you could say you're willing to decrease that a little bit. If first quarter doesn't go very well, you could say you want to increase that a bit. You really have the flexibility to make sure this budget continues to be tailored based on the progression of both the public health emergency as well as the economic and social emergency that have accompanied it.
Okay, perfect. So that was my concern as well. I'm pretty optimistic, I'm a pretty optimistic person, so if all things go well, we can make provisions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I want to follow up right behind Maria on that commentary. So when is the first time, if we adopt a budget in June, are we going to have the provisional changes available in, in the second quarter in January? Or when are we going to first look at that, Tom?
So what you have directed us to do is be ready to make any changes at the end of the first quarter and/or the end of the second quarter. So that's totally up to you as we see how the year goes. And of course, you can change that direction. But the budget, only the city council can adopt the budget, only the city council can change it. So it is totally at your direction, how we construct it, how we bring it back to you, and how often you want to change it.
Okay. And then earlier, Councilman Hammond talked about the possibility of looking at supplemental tax, either adjustment or change, or put it on the ballot. So my question is, is there a way to, is there time enough to get feedback from the public on that, on that possibility?
Yes, sir. The last possible council meeting that you would have in order to place a ballot measure of any type, on the, on the November 2020 ballot, would be your second meeting in July. And so over the next three months, three and a half months, we have the ability to develop a lot of information for you on what kind of a ballot measure you might choose to place, as well as the ability to get significant input from both our business and our residential community as to what their priorities are and what their views are on such a measure.
Okay. And then my other correct question would be on the, Maria talked about it a little bit, for by department, is there a way, I don't know if there's a way to do this simply, but even in the enterprise funds, to see the number of employees that we're dealing with in each of the enterprise funds and in major departments? And then what programs we're talking about either eliminating or temporarily eliminating so we could see how they're going to adjust their staffing levels to go with the cuts?
I would ask Mr. Cornell to answer that because even if it isn't simple, he can make it happen.
So currently, on the quarterly reports, the income statements do break out information based on department level, so not specifically on division level, nor does it talk about the number of employees. However, the expand, the, the large two-year budget book does break down by department, by division, and by number of employees. I can, based on the direction tonight, provide a summary of, kind of an update of what those schedules would look like as of today.
Yeah, and specifically what I'm, the reason why I want to know about this is that if we are to consider not offering a service to the community by a specific department, I want to make sure that if we're reducing the services, that we're being consistent in the way we operate that department, that's all. And I think that's all I have to ask about the budget process. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I, what comes back to me in my mind, you know, in listening to discussion is, again, we've talked about it many years past, is live within our means. And, you know, we only have so much money and revenue coming into the city with which to operate. And, you know, with regard to what the public wants versus what we can afford are going to be two different things, and we may have to make some hard decisions here. And that comes back down to, Tom, you know, the departments. I mean, I, I think, I believe, anyway, you've already directed them to curtail all unnecessary spending and reduce their budgets by 5%? Or is it more at this point?
We have not done an across-the-board budget cut. We, what we have done is asked every department, and they've done a great job of looking under every rock, looking at all their programs and expenditures, and reducing anything that is not absolutely necessary. So just by the nature of some programs and some departments, they were able to find more than others. But, you know, we did not impose an across-the-board uniform cut.
Well, I think that's going to be part of the puzzle. I mean, I, the way I see this, all has to do with the speed of the economic comeback. I believe we're going to see that, but to when, you know, to what point? And we still have to, again, live within our means with revenue that's coming into the city. And if you're saying that, you know, if we come down off of our reserves to the 30% level, we're looking for 7.7 million in just reduction. And so I think, you know, as moving forward, I think recommendation-wise, we need to start looking at all the different options the council would have. In other words, opening up discussions with our staffing and, you know, trying not to lay off, but that might be something as well. I'm thinking now of the firefighters that we have on that program where we had seven of them, we're only paying half of for, I think, another year and a half, is it? Or maybe, Jonathan? About another year and a half. So, you know, I, I don't want to see them go. But on the other hand, if, you know, at the end of that grant period, we're going to be seeing the other half of their costs come back to us as well. So I think, again, there's a lot of opportunity to be looking at trimming our budgets and, you know, getting back to what we can afford, and then watch the economic bounce back and obviously turn things back on as quick as we can. But I, I just hope that, again, we have indicators and data coming in with, you know, the rate of recovery, if you will, that's going to be very accurate so we can make decisions quicker instead of waiting.
Yes, sir. Very good. Councilman Strong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And my comments are going to be a little bit different, a little bit different because while I think it's very important to make sure that our budget is balanced, which we have to do by law, it's, and, and also, there's two other things we have to look at. And it's not just how to cut costs, except how to cut costs prudently, not cut costs internally, but cut the cost of some of our outside services perhaps. And one of the things I'm working on right now, and I'm going to be talking probably slightly more about it in, in our next item when we talk about what we've been doing, is cutting our costs of our JPIA and our disaster recovery costs in case we do have a disaster in the future. And that's perhaps by finding a, a more effective, cost-effective, and better preparation and return on our money in those events by anticipating them and taking the JPIA, Carl Warren and Company, and, and Alliant combination, and pairing them possibly with Synergy NDS and some of the things that are going on in some of the other states that are much more acquainted with disaster and disaster recovery, such as Florida and Texas, and adopting some of their measures or taking a look at them and how they're doing things and maybe improving and streamlining ours to cut those costs of our recovery, which would then allow us to be a little more comfortable depending on, on how much reserves we are keeping in place for that purpose. The other thing is to bring more money in, and we're trying to do that through different things, too, through the California League of Cities, through the National League of Cities. We are trying to get this next bill in Congress to pay more attention to the smaller cities and getting us some recovery money and some help so that we don't have this situation with our budgets. And we're working diligently on that right now, as well as, I'm, I'm working right now, I've got us pretty much locked into at least $80,000 more money for our planning department, possibly up to as much as $150,000, and coming up in the next year or so. And hopefully, I can get, there's another $400,000 that's kind of floating, and I'm hoping we can get a little piece of that. But we're going to see what we can do on that. We just keep diligently trying to bring the money in to help and also look at ways to cut costs other than cutting staff, making our staff more efficient, making our city more efficient, and getting some help where we can get it. We're, we've got some other things on the horizon that will help cut some of our costs in our, our streets and our, and our IT, and those are still on the horizon, but those can come into the discussions. That's why it's going to be very important when we budget, I think, to look at it factually, to look at it carefully, and to be flexible, because we're also not sure just how quickly we can recover and in what ways we can recover and what we might be able to do to spur that recovery. So I, I'm hoping that we not only stay optimistic, but we stay actively optimistic and trying to make our optimism come true through our own actions.
Thank you. You know, I was asked today, I was on sound off on our local radio station, I was asked if we would see changes as the result of our budget deliberations this year. And I said, I don't see how we will not see changes. I mean, the impact both on our businesses and on our city have been significant, and they're going to be long-lasting. But I don't think it's going to be a change in our attitude or our performance in living within our means. Our means, up to this point in time, have been at a certain level, and thanks for our tourism industry and our small businesses and other business activities, we've had a fairly healthy means to live within. Not that we wouldn't always want other things, but we've done very well living in our means. So I don't think this situation presents so much an opportunity to live within our means as a necessity to change the scope of our means. The things that we're going to have the capacity to do in the next couple of years will probably be narrowed, and we're going to have to learn to live within those narrowed avenues in order to continue to live within our means and maintain a high quality of services for our community. I think a couple of things come to mind right now for me. You know, basic economics says if you're working on an economic difficulty, you have two strategies. You increase revenues, you decrease expenditures, and that's coming home very solidly for us as a result of this pandemic. We need to continue nurturing our revenue source. We need to continue nurturing our revenue sources, our, our sales tax, our property tax, our TOT. We need to make sure that those maintain, uh, a healthy status. Yes, they're, they've taken hard knocks and they're reeling right now, but Passos come back from hard knocks before, and I firmly believe we're gonna come back after this one. I think that we can't lose sight of the fact that we need to diversify our workforce. You know, we've had these conversations for years about how happy we are that we have a healthy tourism industry, but if anything were ever to happen to affect that negatively, it would certainly hurt the city. We've seen that instance come to pass now, so we need to rededicate ourselves to strategies that will help us diversify the workforce so that we have a, a healthy and growing tourism industry again, but also we have other segments of the community that make us more resilient in the face of a financial crisis. And finally, we are all people, we are all citizens of Pass Robles, and we know that we all have a responsibility to each other. Uh, uh, our city council has responsibility to our citizens, and if we support them, they are gonna support us, and it's not gonna work any other way. So I have full confidence that our council is gonna maintain that level of support for our citizens, and our citizens in return are gonna look for ways to help our city, our people enhance their revenues and continue to make judicious use of the revenues that come in to maintain quality of life in our city. So, um, I thank you, uh, and our staff for that presentation, and we look forward, uh, to more detailed draft budgets in the future so we can sort of grab on this bone and chew it a little bit more. We certainly welcome, uh, the input from our local citizens and ideas that we can use to be more efficient and, uh, and enhance our way out of this situation. So with that, unless there are any other comments from council, we're gonna move on. We are right now at council business and committee reports, current council committee activities and reports. We'll start with Councilman Garcia.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, I have been working at the pharmacy and, uh, we're thinking outside the box in the pharmacy. We've been offering the curb side, and then we've been offering the two mornings for senior mornings, and now we've also added to mail prescriptions to people's homes. Um, so it's every day at work, it's thinking about new ways to keep everyone safe, uh, employees and, uh, customers and patients. Um, so I've just been, uh, reading a lot of emails on things like that and how to, um, to work on that as far as, uh, in the healthcare profession. Um, also, I've been doing a lot of, uh, translating on social media, uh, through the Hispanic Business Association, uh, Facebook page. We've been trying to really post a lot of readyslow.org information, county information, just really trying to get the information out to everyone to be safe. Uh, try to post, um, three times a day because people work different hours. Um, I also was working with, uh, Pass Robles Daily News. They just started to, uh, translate their online, uh, news page. So I'm working with, uh, Scott on getting more people signed up, and then they just hit the translate button and everything, uh, will be, uh, on Spanish. Um, even though schools are not operating right now, uh, we're still doing a scholarship program. So been reading and, uh, turning in names for students. Um, they worked really hard, uh, and it was, and it's been really hard to, uh, to choose, uh, students. Um, but we got our committee together and we did choose our 10 recipients for Passo High. We're gonna pick two for Liberty and two for Shandon and, uh, and hope the best for them. And, uh, it's pretty sad that they're not gonna be able to celebrate their graduation, but they're looking forward to, uh, to their next step in going to college. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gregory.
Yeah, um, currently I've been working with the, uh, I guess the ad hoc, the ad hoc for getting us back open for business, and I'm focusing, focusing my full attention to, um, having that happen. I would let, ask the city manager if we could, um, help clarify the news on, um, wh- what businesses are gonna be able to open and how they're gonna be able to operate. Um, the small retail businesses and the smaller companies, and even some of the larger ones that have been closed, like some of the car dealers, they need to get back to work. So I, I would, um, please ask that the city manager help the entire business community understand who's gonna open and when they can open and how they can open, and encourage the county to allow people in retail situations to get people into those businesses. Also, um, uh, the restaurants and some of these other businesses that are, have been allowed to operate on a to-go basis, if we open up for restaurants to go into a, um, a more curtailed operation, that we have some kind of a, um, educational process for all the restaurants to understand, and hopefully we can get the wineries open as well so that we can start getting our, uh, tourists back to our town. Um, there's a, a great deal of promise ahead to get back on track, and I think the, the better job we do of it and we can prove to the governor that Pass Robles has always been hardworking at getting its, taking care of its own, will do a good job, and we want to get the govern, the governor and the state of California to start trusting our community and the San Luis Obispo County to do a good job and give us, uh, give us that chance to prove it, because we all want to come back. We want our neighbors and our friends to get back to work, and we want to have everybody healthy and safe, but give us that chance to get back to work and show us that we can do, we like to show you we can do it. And it's time to take these kinds of actions and let us get back to work. Um, if we don't allow our citizens to go back to somewhat of a normal life and get their income back, we're gonna be in a world of hurt, and we cannot take this much longer. So, um, that's where I'm focusing my time, is trying to get open, and I'd encourage our city manager to please help, uh, with the Chamber of Commerce and whoever else could help educate our businesses on Thursday or Friday about all those who could open their doors and get going again. It'd be tremendous help to our, uh, community. And, um, I'd like to thank for all the community, for all their efforts, our firefighters, our police department, uh, fire and safety, for working with everybody in our community, and for all our community members that are working and doing a good job of staying healthy. And please, uh, keep up the good work. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond.
Mr. Mayor, this is Tom. Could I come, uh?
Yes, please.
I'm exactly, I, um, Mr. Gregory, I think your first set of comments about reopening the community were incredibly eloquent and well said. I would just reassure you that, uh, under the leadership of, uh, our assistant city manager, Sarah Johnson Rios, working with, uh, Joel Peterson, Stacy Jacob, um, Paul Sloan at the chamber, Adam Firestone, uh, we are working diligently, she's just done an incredible job, working to reopen the community, understand all of the complexity of the state and counties' guidelines and regulations, and she is on the phone day at least once, if not several times with the county EOC, not only to make sure they come out with clear directives and, and explanations, but also pushing them in the direction that's necessary to help us re-energize our, um, economic life here in, in the community. So we have a huge resource in Sarah, and she's doing a fabulous job.
And I'd, I'd like to make a comment. Sarah, thank you, and I'm intentionally not calling you so you can work harder. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond.
Uh, I want to echo everybody's, uh, effort here. I mean, staff has definitely been putting on hats that they haven't had to wear, you know, for obviously ever, and I think they're doing a great job with, uh, this situation. I, again, in, as far as meetings and things that I've done, it's just not cement a water commission from the, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And then I also wanted to make a comment about the rally in the park, um, the other day, uh, that was quite impressive, I thought. Uh, I actually stood with, uh, Ty Lewis, our chief, and, uh, one of his, uh, I think it was captain, Steve Limpke, and, uh, I thought it was very well done, orderly, uh, seeing people express their freedom of speech and assembly and getting a message out to the governor, again, uh, getting our county back to work. Um, again, it's just what's really what it's about. I, I was kind of impressed with, uh, the way it was handled. Uh, people probably got a little too close sometimes, but even still, uh, I think it's important that we express, you know, what's on our minds, and again, that was a perfect way of doing it. So to, um, all the Robles out there, just hang tight, we're getting things back as quick as we can. We've, uh, as a council, have written letters, um, and expressing our opinion that, uh, it's time and we need to get, uh, an effort going back to open up as quick as we can for businesses that can't open. So, uh, we're working as far as a council as quick as we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, my activities have really been quite broad and, and, uh, many of them have have direct, directly affect our community, but they're on a much broader level and for, and many of them are gonna affect a much broader area. And some of those is, are that, uh, I've been working very closely with a number of nonprofits to try to find additional relief for our small businesses, not just in Pass Robles, but throughout the entire region and the state. And we're, we're trying to work diligently on some efforts at the state and federal level in order to get some additional relief to those businesses so that, uh, they have a, a much higher chance of surviving and prospering. Uh, I've also then, I mentioned the last meeting, how I was about to be meeting with our, our major or our multi-region, uh, conference appointed by the, by the state of California to deal with the housing issue. And in that effort, we did, I may, I did make the motion that is going to bring approximately of, well, one million, million four to our county, and of that million four, our city should be getting somewhere between 80,000 and 150,000 with another 400,000 still to be figured out exactly what we're gonna do with it. And, uh, we'll be discussing that at the SLOCOG meeting, probably not until, uh, June, but, uh, that, that money is going to be used also to our benefit, whether it's done on a regional basis or on our own basis. But I'm talking about at least that somewhere between 80 and 150,000 coming directly to Pass Robles to help us with some of our, uh, planning for how we're gonna handle some of our housing situations. Along that line, we're looking at some other things where we want the, the state to consider that are very important, and that is what is happening because of the, uh, COVID-19, uh, such as the schools closing, especially the universities that have a lot of students that, uh, now are gonna be going virtual instead of attending classes. That means that the RENA numbers that were applied to San Luis Obispo, uh, as a city, for instance, are way too high, and also the amount of money that they're being given in order to address the housing crisis may also be way too high because they may have a tremendous vacancy rate if those students aren't coming back. And with all those apartments going vacant, something has to happen with them. Uh, those landlords and even the state can't just sit there and watch them deteriorate. They're going to have to put them into some kind of use, and that may solve a whole lot of our RENA situation, not just for San Luis Obispo, but for the entire region. So it's, it's another thing to, to look at in this overall situation that we're going to be analyzing and trying to deal with. Uh, I mentioned also, I'm, I'm dealing at the state and federal level to try to work on the next, uh, segment of the state, of the federal help and to address smaller cities. So far, they've been addressing primarily cities of 500,000 plus, which are very few in the entire United States. And the rest of us really need some of that same kind of help, and we're trying to get that. Along that line, one of our big concerns, especially here, is earthquakes and fire and the possible damages we may suffer from those and what the recovery costs will be. And we rely primarily on JPIA, Carl Warren Company, and Alliant as a triumvirate that are our recovery partners. Uh, other states are using Synergy NDS, and in Florida, they also have the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, which is kind of an offshoot and, and sister to that organization. I've been talking with some of them, and I'm trying to get Carolyn Coleman, who is the CEO of our, uh, California League of Cities, together with Mike Sidig, who is her counterpart in Flor, counterpart in the Florida League, Florida League, to see, uh, if there isn't something that we can do on a statewide basis. In Florida, they have every city in that group, so it's a really solid thing that helps them recover from their hurricanes and tornadoes. And I will be continuing that tomorrow morning. I'll be chairing the Regional Transportation Agency meeting. And that's about it.
Thank you, sir. My activities over the last couple of weeks include a, a host of, uh, telephone and video conferencing meetings, including meetings with the Pass Robles Community Response Team, uh, online briefing for FEMA and government relief programs for California cities. I attended a webinar with, uh, California State Senator William Munning. Three times a week, I am on the telephone with elected officials across the county, including health officials. I am a member and representative to the Board of Directors for the Economic Vitality Corporation, uh, been online with that board meeting. Channel Counties Division Board Meeting, we've met twice in the last two weeks. Pass Robles Stakeholder Meetings, twice. Interfacing with the League of California Cities with letter-writing activities to Sacramento and the governor regarding financial relief for cities and detailing the financial impact of the pandemic on, uh, California cities, particularly smaller cities. Uh, online, uh, with Reach, formerly Hourglass, they have, uh, meetings regularly to update the business community on activities at the local, state, and federal level. Participated in a town hall with Salud Carbo Hall, visited with our local Rotary Club. Thank you, John Hammond. Also, our city manager, Tom Furchy, was there. Uh, I was also in the park to observe the COVID-19 rally. I was on sound off today, our local radio station, interviewed by the New Times on the issue of COVID-19, and I continue to produce community informational videos which are included on our city website. I would like to remind people that there are many websites you can go to to get information. They almost all direct you to the same information, which is good, that means there's very little confusion. For city issues, you can go to prcity.com. For countywide issues, including a look at the start plan to reopen the county, you can go to readyslo.org. There are several other websites, uh, subs- uh, sustained by the county, but you will be directed to those websites from, uh, readyslo.org. And finally, I would like to direct people's attention again to our city website, prcity.com, where you will find some truly, um, inspirational videos that have been put on people, on, uh, put on by people in our recreation department, in our library department, the Be Well Program here in Pass Robles, you heard a little bit about that earlier this evening. I really would, uh, suggest you go to the website and take a look at these videos. It gives you a, a nice peek into the heart of the community. Coming up next, we have the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission meeting on Monday, May the 11th at 1:30 PM. Pass Robles Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Monday, uh, May the 11th at 4:00 PM. Planning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, May the 12th at 6:30 PM. The Library Board Meeting will be Thursday, May the 14th, 9:00 AM. And our next city council regular meeting will be Tuesday, May the 19th at 6:30 PM. The deadline for submitted items for the regular meeting, uh, will be May the 6th. And remember, folks, if you want written comments, they have to be submitted, uh, submitted by noon to cityclerk@prcity.com by noon the day of the meeting, and of course, you're always welcome to call in on the phone line to make your public comment. That being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Strong makes move, moves to adjourn.
Gregory, seconds. Hello, Mr. Mayor, do, do we lose you?
Uh, just momentarily. So I have, I, I heard a motion by Councilman Gregory, seconded by Councilman Strong to adjourn. Almost in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.